Can you bring up Google Maps? Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I was actually trying to bring it up on the Orange County GIS system, but it doesn't want to pull up the SBL for some reason.
Zoom out more. Can you zoom out in a bit? Otherwise, I have the photos on the ARB. If you want to bring up the ARB, we can look at the photos there, too.
You're talking these?
Well, I'll tell you what. We can look at this aerial for a second. Let me go back to the side. I'm being videotaped, too. If you could scroll down just a little bit.
Too much.
I just want to be able to see the road here. This is not the best aerial.
The drone wasn't working that day?
Can you bring up that one? I want to go to the ARB plan. The ARB plan will have better photos and images that we can look at. Now, some ortho imagery is just better than others. That's not the ARB.
I don't have.
I'll tell you what. Hold on.
I think it's the 925.
Yep, I just.
Okay. See, but there's all those white lines. I don't know.
This one? Which page are you on?
And there's a blue. I don't think you're in the right spot. There's like a... This is like a gravel driveway right here?
There's a trail right there.
It's the same car? Okay, so you're in the right spot. There wasn't before when I was there, but obviously there is now. But we're well over 150 feet away from the back of the limits of disturbance of the property to wherever the trail could potentially be. With a wooded buffer in between.
In this picture here that we have up, how close is the house in front?
Well, let's go to the site plan so we can look at the real number.
Back to this one?
Yep. Go to Sheet 4. Let me go back here. Should just stay back here. The resolution, yeah. So this property line from here to here is 125 feet. And then we've got a 33-foot setback from that spot.
So it was just.
Yeah, it's an optical. Yeah.
You're good.
And the driveway comes out through a telephone pole and a tree that have to be.
No, they're going to leave the telephone pole there.
There's a pole there in the corner, yes.
Would you be able to shift the house more towards the side property line so that you didn't have to push it further back? Or does that not work with the?
To the right, you mean? If I can push it to... What does that gain me?
So you wouldn't need the variance?
I see. If we can bring up this site plan again real quick?
Look, I don't even know if it's an option. I was just thinking. It might be too far.
I'm not... I'd have to flip the driveway in the house. And I don't know with contours if I can do that. I could take a look at it. It's not a bad idea, though. Because then what would happen is the house would sit more within that setback right there where there's more than 30, 40 feet. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I was trying to get you away from either the variance or Rich's concern of pushing it back further. So I was just trying to.
I can take a look at it. It's not a bad idea, but I'm not sure it'll work. But I will take a look at it.
Look at me coming up with engineering ideas.
Just to get an idea, because it is 200 feet from the existing driveway, correct? It's over 200 feet.
Where the house is located? Correct. It would be probably about 200 feet, yes, from the driveway.
I think we could put markers to see where it's gone.
Okay. And that's what we've done in the past. In lieu of a tree survey, that's what we've requested, to mark the driveway and where the house is going to sit on the property.
Oh, we can do that. I thought you were asking us to figure out the distance between the house and where the open space trail.
No. Instead of having to go out and survey every tree.
Yeah, we can stake the house.
You stake out the driveway and the outline of the property and that.
Did you think the same thing? All right, so we can.
I mean, unless you really want to go out and measure every tree.
No, no, no. We'll stake out the house. And if we move it seven feet, I don't think that would be tremendous. Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, we can stake that for you and let you know when it's done and you can go out there and take a site walk. Okay, the limits are clearing as well.
Usually they'll mark the LOD. You'll see like a marker for the LOD and then you'll see driveway.
Yeah, it'll be like yellow versus red or whatever they're tying it.
Yeah, the left corner, right corner, back rear, right rear, just.
We'll do that. And then we'll send an email when it's done. So if you want to take a site walk, you certainly can.
I think that would work. Other questions, comments, concerns?
I'm good at the moment.
So what are we? Our next meeting is April 17th. Right, Kelly, April 17th?
Your next meeting is April 3rd. You have a special meeting.
Well, that's for the scoping session, so we're not going to do anything. But I'm saying for this applicant, because I know you're trying to do a public hearing, would you be able to get everything in by the 5th?
And if they did, then that would have to be... We could get a response from Mike. And if it needs a variance, we just wouldn't have it published. But it also would require them to figure out a solution with the setback.
Right, well, that's why I'm...
Yeah.
I know you had requested that moved forward towards a public hearing. If we, being April 17th is out, you would have to have the stuff in by the 5th.
I think I can do that. The comments were not substantial. It was just a lot of homework. I don't know. I'll look at... Two things. If I shift the house to the left or if I'm going to move it back seven feet. One of the two is going to happen. I'm going to do my best. I feel confident about moving it back seven feet, but I can't be committal. I'd like to do it first.
Okay. And no one's making you commit, but at least for the public hearing, whatever you present at the public hearing is going to be what?
What we are going to have, in fact, yes. So I'm going to work towards probably moving it back seven feet and see how that works out. Because moving it to the left, I'm not sure will still avoid the setbacks. I'll look at it, but I'm not sure at this point.
And then the material board as well?
Yep, we can... That's an easy lift. We can get some additional pictures for you. We'll update the ARB. We'll make sure everything's consistent and we'll make a resubmit.
Okay.
And comparison photos.
Comparison, yes.
Correct.
Anything else? We can do it. We don't do it tonight. At some point, we have to do it.
It's up to you. I think that sounded like a motion.
It did sound like... I heard Tommy just make a motion to make it.
I'm making a motion. Declare it a type 2. Action.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor? And I'll offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for April 17th. Second question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time on this application tonight.
Don't go anywhere.
I'm not going. Just want to tell him he's free to go home at this point.
Oh, come on, here. There's only two applications left. You want to leave now? That's what happens when you're a consultant. You have no life outside of the office hours.
What?
All right, so.
Thanks, Steve. I appreciate you sticking around.
Seven Spring Road, Crystal Springs.
Yeah, that one.
That one. Whatever you're in.
I'm sorry. You will bring those plans up as well?
Oh, you want me to bring those?
I'm feeling spoiled right now. I'm enjoying this. And I'm going to make sure I go to the back monitor this time, first time. Only took me about five or six times to figure out to get that.
Because the next time that you come, we're going to completely flip the monitors so that... They're actually supposed to be flipping the daisies around, so.
Then we'll all just be confused.
Everybody will just... The world will be turned upside down.
I'm going to lose my huge table.
So, I mean, we've had a few revisions now to this plan. I think this plan is in a really good spot at this point. I think we've addressed most of the prior comments from your consultants. What's remaining are very minor housekeeping items from what I saw on the most recent comment letter. We can go over that comment letter tonight real quick, see what's outstanding, and maybe have a chat with the board and discuss if there's a potential for a public hearing scheduling for this particular project as well. I mean, I think we're... I think these plans, as shown right now, are pretty much... They're not going to change much of any if there's any revisions I have to make.
Want to go ahead first, Jim?
Sure. So according to the code, a minor subdivision is a subdivision containing no more than four lots over a 10-year period. The applicant is proposing less than four lots or four lots or less. But if they propose a fifth lot and within 10 years, we recommend that you put that as a condition of your action if you go forward with that.
I thought, Kelly, I thought we had that in our code now, that we hit that clawback provision. That if you do minor on minor, it becomes a major.
Yeah, I think it was... I'll find it.
I thought that's something we changed.
I think you did.
Either way, we'll put it either... Either it's in our code or we'll make it a condition.
We take no exception to...
Keep kicking that thing.
Making that a condition of a resolution, that's fine.
Either one way. I thought we changed the code, but I could be.
The applicant's plan notes their intent to abandon the well in accordance with DOH and AWWA requirements. We recommend that be a condition of your action, that the abandonment is prior to the building permit or construction of any individual home. The applicant supplied a well year yield test report. Actually, the applicant supplied information and it was reviewed by Hydro Environmental Solutions on your behalf. A test for one well which was supplied is sufficient for the board's preliminary plat approval. However, we recommend a condition that other wells be proven for supply and quantity prior to final plat approval. The water quality samples that were supplied did not meet New York State DOH drinking water guidelines for divinity, iron, and magnesium. We recommend a condition requiring that tests and results be provided prior to obtaining final well approval from the superintendent of water. The well completion report and test report for all wells should be submitted to DEC per DOH requirements for the individual wells. The applicant should submit a well completion and test report for each lot prior to certificate of occupancy. We recommend that be included. The applicant's plan has been revised to show each lot will be developed with a five-room bedroom home. Increased from the prior four-bedroom proposal, the applicant should provide an updated projected water and sewer demand form. On the septic systems, we have some technical comments. I don't know if they're really necessary to go through with the board's time. I don't think that...
Okay. I don't think anybody up here is a septic guru. So we'll leave that to the guys with the cool little letters after their names.
Okay, thank you. A swept is required for this project due to the state requirements. It only needs to be the erosion and sediment control requirements. We recommend that that is submitted at the appropriate time. Cut and fill analysis. The analysis indicates 7,438 yards of soil will be removed from the site and no more than 1,500 cubic yards of soil will be removed in any one day, which they expect to be 100 trips per day. The destination of the materials and the route over which the materials will be transported should be identified as required by the code. We recommend that this be a condition included prior to building permit. A freshwater wetlands permit is required. The permit application should be submitted. Clearing. Under the code, the location of all trees of the site over one foot in diameter, four feet above ground level should be identified on the plat. In the prior memorandum, random recommendations recommended the applicant show the required clearing limits with trees meeting this criteria. You may waive this requirement as per the code.
I think we'll do the same thing. We'll do the staking. You'll mark the limits of disturbance, the driveways and the...
And the house location.
The house location.
Yep, we can do that.
And the roadway.
The roadway, yeah.
Center line? Center line is good, like every 100 feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Every two inches. And you have to use 12-foot bamboo stakes.
With red balloons.
With red balloons.
With red balloons. Take that over concrete monuments, that's for sure.
On the easements, the applicant should show the proposed easement over the outfall construction on Lot 1. At the appropriate time, the bearings and courses should be shown with the meets and bounds description submitted for verification. Okay, into the next round of plans, we recommend that the applicant note moderate to large impacts due to proposed wells. The application is subject to the moratorium. The applicant should discuss it here. This is under the EAF, the SECRE, Part 3. And just GML referral, we have not... We're not aware of any response from the county. You came in?
Kayla just asked me for a bunch of them.
Never mind.
Did we send it to Superintendent Wyatt as well?
Yeah, a while back because we asked about when it was potentially continued. But we can resend it to him.
Just because with the cul-de-sac and just to make sure he's got room to turn around.
Could I get that as well?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, when I...
And then...
Yes.
We didn't do an ESO referral yet either, right? I don't see anything either, so we'll do ESO and to Superintendent Wyatt. I would imagine he's going to want to snow push easement somewhere at the end of the cul-de-sac.
We have that shown.
You do?
Yeah.
I'm sure you do. It's been a while and it's one of...
Yeah, no worries.
40-something applications.
I understand. Trust me.
Go ahead, Kelly. I know you have food.
Okay, so a couple of things. This application, as noted, is subject to the moratorium. It is not exempt, so an application should be made to the board of trustees or else it just sits until the moratorium's over.
So whenever you want to do that, it behoves you to get that on their radar?
It doesn't mean that they're going to get it, but if they want to try for it, they certainly can. In terms of SECRE, they provided you with an expanded Part 3. Thought it was very good, very detailed, but it was missing. It did not respond to Question 9A, which you specifically modified at your last meeting. And in the document, it didn't respond to a question for groundwater, but they did provide a well test plan, well yield report, and lab reports. So I defer to the engineers whether that's sufficient. I know there was talk about setting a public hearing. This is a subdivision, so SECRE does need to be completed prior to that. So they should be submitting something, amending what they previously submitted to address those two in the narrative, just so that's clear. You would also need to authorize the drafting of a negative declaration or a positive declaration if you choose to go that way.
But we need the completed form to do that.
Yeah, I just... I don't think that it's going to be... It's really 9A, and then I would get engineering comments on the wells, but yeah. GML did come in. It had several advisory comments on water resources, SWIP, erosion and sediment control. They wanted additional agency referrals, environmental constraints, and street connectivity. We should probably refer it to them again just so that they have the updated, updated plans. It was noted this requires a freshwater wetlands permit, which does require a public hearing. So if you're setting the public hearing for the subdivision, you should also set it for the freshwater wetlands permit and make sure that's in, that its documents are in. And there's a typo on the first page of the plans. You've got the wrong lot listed, so.
Those are wrong.
Just minor. You covered that? You covered that? You covered that? And that's it.
So it sounds like we should hold off on the public hearing until we get the expanded Part 3 so we can make the impact.
It's your call.
It sounds to me like there's only two minor comments. I'm sure I could get that in from our planning consultant very quickly. If it's something that can be submitted after, you know, this meeting and certainly well before any scheduled public hearing.
Could we do the determination of significance and the public hearing on the same night?
You can. You just actually have to adopt the determination of significance prior to opening the public hearing.
Okay. So then we can... April... We could do April 17th, then?
You can do April 17th, but you'd need a motion... I'd ask for a motion to authorize the drafting of a negative declaration, and there would be some bold italics for you to consider.
That if we had to make it a positive?
And if you had to make it a positive, you would do so that night and then say that the public hearing will be rescheduled to...
Is the board okay with doing that? We're not tying ourselves to anything. We can always change that.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead. Ask your questions first.
Jim, in your memo, in 2D, Test Well 1 was pumped at a rate of 5 gallons. Said no drawdown on a pump station down the road.
Yes.
Shouldn't all three wells be tested at the same time to see if there is significant drawdown?
You know, this was viewed by the hydrologists. So I do agree with you, yes. But I would also ask that we refer it back to them as well, just to confirm it. But yes, I do.
Could I make a comment also on that, if that's okay?
Sure.
We're already scheduling... We're in the process of scheduling the other pump tests to occur on the other three wells. That'll be part of your final public hearing or approval process.
Three wells running concurrently?
They will have to... Well, we can... I can have them do that if you would like.
Yeah, I'd like to see all three at once. Doesn't go to any kind of drawdown. Second, no fire hydrants are going up in this?
I mean, let me just check with our hydrogeologists and just make sure. I'm not sure how normal it is to run all three at once.
Okay.
Not for 72 hours. You follow what I'm saying? I think this is a 24-hour pump test. But let me check with them just to make sure. But we probably can do that.
Without fire hydrants? There's going to be no fire hydrants?
We have drilled wells here. I have no public water supply system. So, I mean, the village is going to have to probably use a pump truck.
Well, yeah, it's a tanker. They have a tanker task force. They have to be.
Okay. And lastly, I didn't notice on the plans, are there sidewalks in this?
I don't believe so. Can we go to this... Zoom in on the next page for the... Yeah, no, I don't believe so. Go to the grading plan just to confirm. Next sheet. Scroll down to the larger view, next sheet. Nope, we have roadside swales and curbs. I mean, this topography here is super steep.
What?
It's pretty steep. I've got like 9 and 10% grades on a good portion. So I don't know if sidewalks are truly conducive here.
Well, if you ride on a skateboard.
Yes.
You go wee. I'm just looking at the... You've got a pretty decent... I mean, that'd be great if you were a kid, if you got some... Got sled riding.
You go down one way, you're not stopping.
Let the carriage go to the top and meet it at the bus stop. No problem.
I think a National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation going down the sled run.
Normally I'd agree, but I don't think it's very walkable.
Yeah, if it's not, yeah, if it's not walkable.
It's not pedestrian-friendly.
Okay, that's all I have at the moment.
That's actually a very good point about the sidewalks because they might be required unless waived. So I'm going to make a note.
That we're waiving them or we might waive them?
That they're required unless you have the ability to waive, and then I'll give you the waiver requirements.
Okay.
And since I have the floor, just to get back to your prior question, 272-30C, that part was adopted, so you don't need to worry about that. You don't have to write that site down. That was for Chris's don't want to keep him awake at night thoughts.
And if we can't waive it, then we have to go to the ZBA?
No, this is outside of the zoning code, so they would have to put them on there.
It's in the subdivision requirements, and that's not something that can be waived by the ZBA. We'll leave that as a question mark for now.
Yeah.
Not that big of a... All right. Any other questions, feedback for the applicant? All right, so I'll offer a motion to have the council draft a neg deck of significance.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll also, again, everything will need to be in by the 5th.
5th, yes.
So I'll offer a motion to have a public hearing scheduled for April 17th.
Second.
Second. Questions? All in favor?
And just to be clear, at this point, for this April 5th submittal, we're talking about just the updated part, expanded Part 3 that I provided.
Right, because that's what we need in order to make the...
The determination.
Determination, because the plans aren't changing. And if I remember correctly, each lot is coming in for their own ARB approval, right?
That's correct. I think it makes the most sense, yeah. There'd be no way to predict now what's going to happen, and that would change when people purchase the lots and want to build their own home, so.
And I'll have the response on sidewalk prior to then so that if it's required and it needs to be on there and there's no ability to waive, he knows that beforehand.
Do we... I guess we don't need to do it now, but maybe talk about being the locations and size of the houses have been shown. Are we going to do like a plus or minus 10%?
It's up to you.
That they... If someone... Because each house site is being left for its own ARB approval. So everybody's going to come in. So he's given us these locations and these houses. Now, if someone comes in and wants to build a slightly bigger home or move it three feet to the left or three feet to the right or... So.
So he's just coming in for the plots, not for actual house designs and...
No, where the driveway is going to go, where the houses are going to go, where the septic and where...
Wells and septics won't change. Houses may, but I don't... With the topography we have here and how they're connected to the septics, I'm not sure how much they really will change, but I think a certain leeway would be important to provide a future applicant for a building permit.
So why does everybody think about that? We don't make a decision on that tonight. Well, just think about what you would be comfortable with.
Take it under consideration.
Take it under consideration. We'll talk about it at the public hearing when he comes back.
Sounds good.
Anything else for us?
I think I'm all set tonight.
See you next month.
All right, thank you very much. Alright, thank you very much, have a great night.
You too. Last, but certainly not least, 88 Jefferson. Good evening, oh, sorry, damn, I forgot, I forgot Kelly snuck one in on us, number 10.
I was gonna say, it's not last, but not least, it's just last.
How about of our applicants?
Last applicant.
Last applicant, last applicant.
Uh, good evening, Larry Hartman from Hartman Design. Um, this project is, uh, 88 Jefferson, it's a proposed two-story addition, basement on fresh floor. Um, this project was at the ARB, um, I think the last time was about six months ago, something like that.
Yeah, and then you went to the ZBA.
And then, uh, yeah, there was an issue because the zoning was changed, the original zoning, so therefore, lot coverage, um, did not comply with the recent bulk, with the changed bulk, and adding this addition made it even more non-compliant. Uh, we went to the ZBA and they granted us the lot coverage, uh, additional lot coverage.
Alright, Jim? I don't, no comment, right? I don't think you have a comment on this, right, Jim?
Uh, no, just about non-reflective windows are a requirement of the code. Um, the applicant should confirm no trees that are removed as part of this proposal, and, um, previous submission included a topographical survey in which the scale provided appeared to be incorrect. The applicant should review and revise, that's it.
Right, we, we've talked about this house quite a few times.
Yep.
So I know, we, we pretty much finished it up, we sent it to the ZBA for the, for your variances, now you're back to us. We did waive the public hearing in August of 2023. We got the, Kelly, anything I'm missing? We did a, we just, we typed it, right?
Nope.
We didn't type it?
No.
Okay. Anything else other than that?
Drafting a resolution?
So I'll offer a motion to type, this is a type 2 under SECRE.
Second.
Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, and I know we did talk about that, um, that it's gonna be a personal MYFA, so we had spoken about putting a condition that the MYFA can't be used as a shawl, and there's gonna be no public connection to, um.
No water.
For the, for the water, those would be two conditions, uh, so are we okay with having council draft a resolution of approval?
Yes.
Alright, so I'll offer a motion to have council draft a resolution approval with the conditions we spoke about.
Second.
Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, Larry.
Larry had to sit here the whole night, this was like the.
I, I don't know why I did that, I'm sorry. Alright, now, last but certainly not least, introductory local law number 2 of 2024.
Okay, so.
Law is yours.
It's very brief, it's called right of entry, and it gives the building inspector the ability to enter a property in accordance with state law.
I have a silly question, why do we need our own law when state law already, already allows?
I, maybe to draw the public's attention to it, so that they're aware of it. I think, cause a lot of people, obviously, unless you're cool like me, are not following case law to know what can or cannot happen. So some people will say, well, you can't do that, and at least there's now something where the building inspector can say, here, yes, I can, it's right in the code, rather than, well, you should look at this new case from the Southern District, so, I, that would be the benefit that I could see.
But, but in all technicality, the building inspector does actually have this power already, it's already within the states.
It is.
Okay.
Um, but I will let the board know, I recommended a couple of revisions, um, to the local law based on comments that had been received, which are in, uh, 310-46.1A, at the very end of that, and it actually goes towards your memo as well, they picked up on the same concern. Is that where it says, blah, 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 at such ti, uh, in the performance of his duties, the code enforcement officer or his designee shall be authorized to enter upon any non-public premises or portion of premises that are not subject, uh, thus subject of an application for permit or certificate or temporary certificate at such times and in such manner as such personnel may deem necessary with the consent of the person in possession or occupancy, comma, upon presentation of proper credentials, period. The code enforcement officer or his designee shall not enter without an adult present on the premises. Those are the recommended revisions to the village board. And I know that they put that in their report too, so I just totally stole Jim's thunder again.
Badges.
Board have any comment or feedback on this?
No.
No.
What's wrong with it?
Okay, a motion to draft a report consistent with.
Sure, well, Kelly, okay, I'll offer a motion to, uh, draft a resolution, um, incorporating Kelly's comments.
Oh, second.
Questions?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now it's done, we know further business before the board, I'll offer a motion to close.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Hey.